Right, yeah, so we'll just start the meeting. So apologies for absence, please.
This is one apology, councillor Jeremy.
Councillor Jeremy, okay, thank you.
I'm standing as a substitute for ten.
And have you all seen the minutes of the last planning meeting? You're content that they're correct? Okay, SM signed. They're done. Are there any declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests or otherwise? And so we're back on planning applications to consider. Back to A, please, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. So this is for Bridge Street from Barclays Bank, proposed conversion into nine flats and a retail outlet. So again, another location that everyone will be very familiar with as outlined in blue there. And if we just go down to the photos, again, it's a building that you'll all have seen many times. I draw your attention to the little extension at the front, the dark brick and glass structure on the front there, because that will be useful to orient yourself with when it comes to looking at the planning diagrams a little bit later on. So I'm actually going to start with the Historic Buildings Officer comments here, which does reflect, generally speaking, a sort of request for a lot more detail about exactly what is being done or what's supposed to be done and why, basically. So the the planning application certainly doesn't have enough information for the Historic Buildings Officer at this stage, so he's asking for a lot more information on that. Highways, by contrast, have no concerns about the proposed development. If we look at the applicant's own design and access statement, so they're basically setting out, they're still to create a new retail outlet and the, as I said, the nine flats. They point to the car parking area at the rear, which we'll see in one of the plans in a minute, which will also have bike and EV charging facilities. They are pointing out that also that they are mainly trying to get entrances to each flat from the outside rather than having a sort of entrance area and corridors that people get in through. And the area at the back will be accessed by an electronic centre-driven gate, which the residents will have some kind of facility to open. So in the application form themselves, as we said, it was, it's an empty bank, it has had various other uses while it's been empty. So the, they wish to say that they'll be restoring as much of the facilities or the original features as possible, but as I said, as far as the Historic Buildings Consultant is concerned, there's not nearly enough detail on this, merely statements that they will replace with hardwood in the original style. The front elevation will remain untouched according to that application form. And again, proposed materials and finishes for the external doors, hardwood or nate, and that's the level of detail we've got here. If we go down to the plan, so you can see the access via the instigate to the car parking area there with eighteen car parking spaces plus six for EV spots and some bike sheds. So if you have a look at the shape of the bank building there, I've tried to laid out things in that same orientation in the upcoming pages. So you've got the, on the ground floor, you've got a sort of large rectangular building with a smaller rectangle just to the north of it. And if we now go down to the plan diagrams, so I have turned that upside down for a reason. So if, if on the top right there, on the side of the building, I don't want to land and hold it over it, that's the extension. Yeah, just down a bit to the right, down to the right. So there, yeah, there we're looking at the extension, the entrance into the bank as was. So that's the dark brick and glass section there that we're looking at. So that's the existing layout of the ground floor. And if we can just go down to the next one there, we can see the proposed layout. So basically, the proposal is that that, that same area on the right of the building, which is the entrance to the bank, will be an entrance with a lobby area and that will have an entrance to one of the flats, flat two there, as well as through some glass doors into the retail outlet, with flat one having an entrance from the outside and flat three, you can see there being entries from the rear area there. And there is also flats four and five there, and you can see the layout in detail there if you want, in terms of. There are basically bedsit layouts with different numbers of bedrooms in each case. If we could have a look at the first floor. So again, the sort of empty layout as existing. So what you're looking at there is the same orientation and it's, the, the building goes sort of backwards away from the street frontage. And there's a side bit that sort of, which is the main kind of original frontage, if you like, which will be looking down over that dark brick and glass section. So if we can have a look at the proposed layout there, so you've got four more flats on that level. And yeah, so you can see the layout again, if you want to look at that in detail. But basically, as I said, it's, it's mainly a sort of bedsit type arrangement with different numbers of bedrooms in each case. So if we could move on to the next bit. So the rear elevation as existing is shown there and basically it's just the two entrances or one entrance and a new entrance that's changing. So there's, you'll see a door with a ladder leading up to it in the middle and that, you can see, has been replaced by a more ornate door. And on the bottom left of the picture there, there's some railings being added and a new door for one of the flat entrances there and a new door on the bottom right, again, for another flat entrance there. So that's what would be seen from the rear elevation, from the car parking area, basically. The front elevation is largely unchanged, no proposed restructuring really there. And if we head on, I think there might be one more bit, is there? No, that is the end of it. So back to you, Chair.
Okay, Mark, thank you very much. I've already got Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one comment and then a suggestion. The comment is, I do find it concerning that we are here faced with the possibility of another gated community within our town. It, it doesn't sit well with me that parts of the town should be sort of locked off, banned to the general public. I don't feel comfortable with that. And I think at the very least, what we might be saying is, all right, to be electronically operated gates for cars, but can we have a pedestrian gate that's available at normal, the normal time? And the suggestion I have is to take account of the Historic Buildings Officers' concern and address those either by saying that we delay our decision or if that's not sensible because they, Breckland might go ahead, then can we make a conditional, if we're going to support this idea in principle, can we make a conditional on them addressing the Historic Buildings Officers' concerns? Kim?
Thanks a lot. Any others?
Stuart, then Terry, then Matt. I think the, where the front door is, the big roof there dropping down, there is a fine existing door perched halfway up there. And it would be nice to expose that, to see that as part of the street space. As I understand from the plans that it looks there, there's going to be an access to utilizing that door. However, it looks as though it's going to be just, the existing wall will be open. So I'm just concerned that antisocial behaviour that may occur if people get in to the town centre there. And if it could knock that down and, you know, provide the image of that doorway, that would knock out the antisocial behaviour, but also improve street space.
Absolutely. Thank you. Terry.
Yeah, my concern is, it says here, and I'm just picking my line up here. Says the chairman from the bank will create a new retail outlet or maybe a cafe slash restaurant. I think there's a world of difference between a retail unit and a cafe slash restaurant in terms of any impact it might have on the surrounding houses. So on that basis alone, I think they need to up their game, basically.
That's, that's not good enough, is it?
No, no, it's fine.
Matt? Thunderstealer, I was going to say, I had, I had two points. Point number one is the, the vast difference in a retail outlet, a cafe and a restaurant and what licenses are entailed as part of that. The other thing is, the Historic Buildings Officer has made quite a lot of valid points. Their drawings aren't labelled correctly, it's an inadequate statement. It doesn't discuss the impact of the proposals. Again, I feel this is something that I don't know how we can be expected to pass judgement on it if one of the bodies which we use and hold quite a lot of weight and is clearly saying it's not an adequate plan. And so I don't know whether we push back, defer, request them to do, I don't, I don't know how that side of it works. But I think it's a shoddy application, again. What does it want to be downstairs and has it answered any of the things that the Historics Buildings Officer has brought up? We're starting from that. I'm all for more, more shops, fantastic. The word luxury concerns me a little bit on a, on a really beautifully fronted street. The word luxury costs to be a bit of, oh, but I feel luxury from the eye of the holder. We'll see what an inside toilet.
It, it could be, yeah.
It flushes.
Thank you. Back in the day, Mike. Okay, councillors, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, Danny.
Just, no, it's just a point about the heritage part of the building. Isn't this an opportunity to get that awful front stuff removed? I mean, why would you keep that there? It's not part of the heritage, it's ugly. If it's going to be used as luxury flats, but I think they're just bedsits, aren't they? That needs to go, you know, and then you'd see the building, you'd see. I know that's probably not a planning consideration, but, you know, it is an opportunity to get that knocked down.
Yeah, I fully agree and I have, I did look through the planning considerations and it doesn't really fit apart from incompatible or being in a conservation area. The trouble is, it's been like that for so many years already, so the argument would kind of be undone, I guess. I think from my, sorry, again, oh, sorry, Carla. So my, my take on it, for what it's worth, is that firstly, it's an opportunity missed, as you say, with the front of the building. It's, it's a beautiful building and it could make that street look so much better. So that's one thing. Nine apartments in there is quite a lot and when you look at the size of the rooms, they're, they're pretty squished in. And, and of course, the elephant in the room is that retail outlet, what is it going to be? The, the thing that worries me about retail outlets in this particular part is we've got lots of empty ones already. And the default answer to anything is, is an all-day supermarket. You know, and those kind of things do come with all the huge retail bins that you're going, even a normal shop is going to have big retail bins. But that's been proved by the one outside the Castle Caff recently. So that's, that's my fear on it. And I do go back to everything that everybody said about the high, the Historic Buildings Officer has made it quite clear, it isn't detailed enough. Sorry, I jumped in. Carla.
That's, that's fine, and you sort of stole one of my points, to say, because I was going to say, nine luxury flats, yes, the building is big, there's sculpted a lot in it, but nine seems a bit of an overstretch. Nine luxury, it's going to be micro luxury, I'm thinking, because even though we can fit quite a few inside, I think nine, nine is really pushing it. I mean, we had this issue many years ago with the old pub up the road in One Heart. It, it, it's, it's, it's still sitting there to be decided because there, there was this willingness of the developers to turn into flats or turn into, you know, living quarters, whatever. And we always raised the issue that too many, too many flats within one single building becomes a bit too overcrowded. And then there's the point about the retail is right in front of the, the, the light signal in the road. That would cause a bit of havoc with people trying to get in and out of it and cause a bit of disturbance with rubbishes at the moment, you know, noise and whatnot. So that, they need to look at that.
Thank you. Yian?
Yeah, I feel a bit conflicted in that, you know, it, it looks hideous at the moment because, and, and, you know, getting somebody in there would be great. So I don't know if we can also put any conditions on there that we don't want it to be a slot, a slot machine shop or a rate shop again, as we said before last time, but, you know, I, I, I do feel like getting the building rejuvenated and any use would be good.
I think we're all agreed that we'd like to object. So I'd just like to show hands to say that we're going to object, so that's unanimous. And I think we ought to object on the grounds of the lack of detail from the Historic Buildings Officer. Is there anything else you want mentioned in there specifically?
I'd say it's overcrowding, the, the application is, is, seems a bit pushed past a little bit of how many flats you can fit in within that living area, considering the amount of movement and the road is facing the road and it's right central. So I think it's a bit of overcrowding, but I don't know how you can fit that in within.
The question about the retail unit, what they actually want to do with it.
Yeah, that can cause issues.
I've just had one good question. This, Matt, I could have drawn this.
I know.
Where, where is the bin store?
It doesn't show it.
We're lacking detail here for that.
Yeah, I'm a bit concerned. Where are they going to keep the nine luxury flats?
I think if they can they could afford a good plan, right?
So nine luxury flats is eighteen luxury wheelie bins at the very least. Yeah. So, yeah. Okay, we're quite happy to object on, sorry, Mark.
I'm just questioning, sorry. Are they putting retail in there as a shop to keep it a mixture of commercial? And they're not allowed to date, they're going to stuff another flat in there?
Probably won't.
Which is
Let's drop it in, yeah.
Basically much more struggle to find, isn't it?
The, the question is, as a councillor, what would we prefer? Would we prefer to have it filled all with flats? Or would we prefer retail outlet as well as the flats?
Just flats.
I think it's very difficult to mix the two personally.
I think that's a good question and I think the truth is that if this goes through, they will have the choice of retail or, or a cafe. Which is better for us is questionable as well. I, I spent my mornings in a drinking coffee in cafes, so I mean, I can be an early candidate for that. There are only two within a hundred and fifty yards. One is the, the pub and the other is the cinema. So not a problem with alternatives available. I, I do think that we need to make sure that we're happy with nine flats. To some extent, we are playing a game, colleagues. We are against a professional developer who, who has said nine in the half expectation that it'll be whittled down to, say, six. My guess is they'll be perfectly happy to put in six flats and my guess is we should help them along by saying nine is too many. Crowded, too crowded.
Any agreeance on that?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll agree with that. I'm just going to add, we, we don't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily need to be a shop or a cafe. It could be a business office space, it could be other purposes. They could still use it for a commercial service, not necessarily one that moves rubbish and moves a lot of people. You know, it depends on what they're licensing the space for and what they let that out for, really.
Okay.
That's all.
I think, I think we're quite content to object to that on those grounds. Right, happy. Okay, Mark, if we can move on to where we've got, in fact, I'd just like to go back to the nursery at B, please. Now that the, the public are not here, I'd just like to recover this to make sure that we're happy with what we're going to do about this. So we are going to object and we're going to send a letter to Breckland with our outline problems, we've got an awful list of them there. Now that would be as strongly worded as we possibly can. Is there anything else the council thinks we ought to be doing?
Matt? So I cashed in a favour with someone who, the MP, and who, as someone who helped with the Cranswick objection, to take a look at this. And, and read the report back, he just says, had a look at the application, to be honest, there isn't really much to object to, except the possible noise impact, the impact on traffic. I don't know what this makes it mean, so we'll write it down, hope someone does. And I would suggest that your best local plan policy is to try COM zero three, C O M zero three, protection of amenity, which states, for all new developmental consideration will need to be given to general amenity impact issues, especially residential amenity. Development will not be permitted, which causes unacceptable effects on the residential amenity of neighboring properties. There's a huge list and one of those is odor, noise, vibration and other forms of nuisance.
Okay, if, if you could forward that, we will include it within the letter because that makes absolute sense. And I think on top of that, we will include the emergency service.
In, in traffic.
In, in the traffic.
Possibility.
We, we will come on to it at the very end. There is an outstanding piece where we were going to write a letter once before, but we were guzzumped by other happenings. Now, my, my take on our position as a, you know, an advisory body, if you like, is that unless we write letters, then many of our decisions are just going to get overturned or ignored, which they have done. But I don't want to dilute, dilute what we're doing by writing a letter about every single thing because that, that's just, A, a lot of work and B, it's going to sound the same. And so I think if we cherry pick the ones that we think are most important and, and put our, our weight into those. There's another thing, Matt.
There is, and it's quite, again, a punchy one. Raised the question of off-street parking provision for staff. The application for the number of staff is to increase it from seven to twelve. Some of those staff will walk and cycle, so some will drive there. Breckland's current local plan, page two hundred and fifty-three, has a minimum car parking provision listed as for creches and nurseries, one per full-time equivalent staff. It doesn't look like they're providing any of those additional spaces on there. So that could be something really good to get as well. And that's per Breckland's local, current local plan.
Okay, again, if you can forward that, I'll do that to you.
Very good.
Off an Alan will chase that one down. Brilliant. We, we're quite happy we nailed.
Yeah.
Right. Sorry, sorry.
It's just about the noise thing because I was helping somebody who had put in air conditioning units and the neighbour objected and saying they were too loud, they weren't too loud. But in order to prove they weren't too loud, she had to go and get a proper noise assessment, which cost about a thousand pounds. So I know it's expensive, but if we're going to say noise, and I quite agree, you know, noise of forty-five children or even however many they've got at the moment in a garden is going to be quite a lot. That we perhaps, do we need to have some kind of actual proof of the noise? We can't just say, well, forty-five children, of course, make a lot of noise. That, that, that's all I was thinking, that do, do, or do you think it's, if everyone's happy to just say, you know, that, that it will be noisy? But you see what I mean, do we need to
Trying to quantify what that noise is, so that we could go back to the
From the case.
Yeah, so there must be a
Just say, if you have a dispute with your neighbours because they've been overly noise outside of hours within that dilemma to how much noise can have. When you put in a complaint, one of the first things they'll probably ask you to do is to try the readings, get some, gather some evidence of the noise with a desk for reader or whatever the situation may be. So this might be something we can suggest to the residents, neighbouring gardens, for them to take some readings, put this in written and send it to the environment, who's a student department in Breckland that deals with, you know, neighbourly complaints. Because it is within their grammar to deal with this sort of situation. For unsocial behaviour within residential area, because it is a residential area. So this might be a way to look at it.
Environmental health, I heard, I mean, we take a registered company come to come and do it. I know this might be different, but I'm, I'm just, I don't want Breckland to say it's not food case against it, you know, or you're just saying noise, that, that sort of.
I, I understand, you do have a valid point, saying it, because it is quite expensive, that, that assessment. And then the problem is, is, is hefty. But if the residents put in a complaint to the environmental services for disrupting, you know, their living area as a neighbourly complaint, and then eventually take some readings of the noise with a desk for read or something, something to corroborate and show evidence of it. Even if it's with a video recorder of the sound, just gather some evidence that can back up their claim, might be a way to pressure them, you know, putting that across without the hefty cost of the official assessment, which can come later if needed.
Like you told, the ways we make, nursery have to prove that the noise isn't affecting, you know, it might be that we
You say, I think they were
They put it, not anybody.
But if it's a complaint from the neighbours, from the residents, it's up to them to prove the issue, the burden's on them to prove that they have an issue with that.
That's what I was going to say, it's actually down to them to say that we think is the problem rather than somebody saying we haven't got a problem.
Exactly.
So what I'm going to suggest on this, and I might ask, Mike, if we could, as the councillor for the area, can we lean on you to liaise with the, with the community and ask them to put in those complaints? With environmental health, because we didn't mention that when they were here.
I can, I can chip in, looking at the legislation precisely what, which can come across and they can base it on this, so I'll look into it.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very conscious of the time, we, we've done a lot on this. So on to C, please. Mark?
Yeah, I suspect this might be not quite as long. So, yeah, trucks on Catston Way and the industrial estate. So again, the site will be familiar to you, a large industrial building and there's another building behind it with a loading area in between the two buildings as marked in the blue area there, which currently has a sort of partial covering as indicated within the blue rectangle. Could we go down to the photo, please? And this marked in the yellow oval there, that's the area in question. Yep, if we go down to the actual plan, which again just shows it. So this is what's proposed, the existing bit in the plain grey there and the cross-marked bit as the new area that will be basically sort of turned into a link between these two buildings, as we'll see in a minute. So, yeah, if we can go down to the next bit. So, yeah, from the design access statement, it's, it's a paved area currently used for vehicle loading and unloading. We have concrete, massable, outstanding. And the proposal is to basically roof it over. So it will then enclose this existing vehicle delivery area between the two buildings. Yep, we go on to the next bit. So there's more details about exactly how they're operating there. So basically similar type of structure to the existing building, cladded walls, shut, roller bay shutters, doors at each ends. So the HGVs can get in and out via the basically east and west end of it. And, yeah, so no sort of improvement to drainage, but it's, it's an existing soakaway and it's already a hard standing. So no further drainage issue there. Red area is the marked bit and that's your before up the top. And you can just see the boundary of the site in the sort of little blue line on the left. That's the after with a roof structure, which we'll see probably better from the 3D drawings a little bit later. So that's the kind of area of it. Yeah, again, shown a little more detail of what's inside it with sort of storage areas and HGV in and out. So if we can just go very slightly up there. So the west elevation, so the left-hand end of it, as you were looking at it on the photo and maps earlier, that's the elevation with the shutter door for the HGVs to go in and out of. If the, if we have a look at the next one down, this is actually looking from the north, so from the, the top of your picture, as it were before. And you've got the building on the left, the, the light grey one is actually in front of that and the building, or the, again, the pale grey one on the right is actually behind it. So you're just seeing a bit of it sticking out there. And the probably the most useful one in terms of visualising it is the next one down. So we can just go a little bit further down. So that's the other end of it, but basically you can see the, the pattern of the roofs there below the existing ones and it sort of goes up and down in a kind of structure like that within the, that gap between the two buildings. And it sort of goes up and down in a kind of structure like that, within that gap between the two buildings. I think that might be it, something like that. Oh yeah, just the materials largely to max existing, but there will be aluminium roof lights as well. And some, as I said, roller shutter doors. And I think that is all of it. Anything else? Yeah, that's the last. Back to your chair.
Thank you, Mark. Any comments at all?
Very quickly. I thought it was a fair interest here actually, because I have in the past driven artics in and out of here in Procter and picked them up and the rest of it. This is a really good idea, it would make my fees.
Yeah, it certainly feels like a building that's being developed for the betterment of, of the, the business, rather than something that's encroaching on anybody else's life. Are we happy to support? Show of hands yet? Okay, thank you. Support. Thank you, and on to D, please. Mark? I thought we'd seen something before. What was that? We've seen one of these many a time.
So yeah, sorry, I'm, yeah, our old friend, yeah, you're, you're very familiar with where it is and what's going on. So just to basically, a little update. And actually, there's a, well, let's look at the highways thing first. So the highways objections before was to do with ingress and outgress of vehicles, basically. So the developers now gone to a car-free option. And the highways required them to restrict that access to make absolutely sure that people didn't drive in there anyway. So they have now agreed to fixed railings at the entrance that will narrow the gap so that only pedestrians and cyclists can get in. On the basis on that, highways are satisfied and don't raise any further objections. So if we could go down to the next page and see that. So it's showing at the bottom of your plan there, the arrows point to new tree planting, by the way. But the, on the bottom bit, there's a little wibbly bit there, which is where the railings are. And again, it's shown in a sort of wibbly pattern on the right, what sort of type of railings they are proposing. So that has now satisfied highways. And I have an update actually on the right, right up to date, Historic Buildings Officers latest comment is that they are now, they are also now satisfied with the new version, which has changed since the disproportionate dormer window, which is mentioned there. So as far as I can tell, it's the, the tree officers' objections, which are still with, in, in situ. But those two are now, as I say, Historic Buildings and highways are now satisfied with this. So if we could just go down a little further to the, yeah. So actually, that comment from the public's also relevant because as we'll see, the Velux window or the roof light type window has actually been again installed on one side of the property. So if we could have a look at the plans, please, aren't? So the new plans, they're showing replacement birch trees and a path entrance. So you will have seen this version before, but what you won't have seen, as I said, is that extra railings blocking off that path from any vehicle, potential vehicle use. So just to familiar, yeah, just a reminder in that sense. And if we can keep going. So again, these are now the changes that seem to satisfy the Historic Buildings Officer. So if you took the top left there, previous, the, on the right-hand side has been replaced by a roof light. This is the north elevation. And if we look at the east elevation, which is basically the front doors of the properties, again, you can see a much smaller window within the roof on those front, on that frontages. And as I said, I'll just remind you, on the other side of the building, either rear of it, that is the, the roof light version now. That's a Velux window rather than a window sticking out. So yeah, if we can go down. So again, just to see the changes there, we're looking from the south side of it now. Again, two large dormer windows replaced by one much smaller dormer and a roof light type window. And these are, so this is the rear view in effect, showing you there again, the windows replaced by the roof light. And that's, there is a view of the front of the properties as it is now proposed that they look. And that, I think again, is this one, for this one, so back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, we've been here before. One thing I couldn't see when I was looking through the pack was if there is any bin storage. Did you notice any while you're going through at all? With better eyes than mine.
Sorry, off again. As far as I can see, there's no mention of a structure specifically. If we go back up, perhaps, Alan?
It's the overview, I can't see it.
Yeah, I don't, if we look at the, the area there, it doesn't look like they've got an actual structure in mind for it. You can see the whole of the kind of property there. If we go right up to the, the first plan we saw, this is the latest version of it. We've got cycle storage marked there as structures in blue. But there doesn't seem to be a bin storage structure such.
Okay, thank you. Councillors, Mike first.
Just a concern about one particular issue, which is the proposal not to provide car park spaces on the grounds that there's a nearby public car park. It's very nice of them to suggest that we, the public, should be paying for their parking. This has already happened before, it happened with the snooker hall, for example. And I think it's something we might like to consider is probably a bad thing. There's a general feeling amongst developers and sometimes supported by Breckland that we don't really need car parking spaces anymore because we'll all be flying or flapping our wings or something in 10 or 15 or 20 years. And I think the evidence is rather slim. Actually, there's, the place is fuller of cars than it ever was. So I would have concern about that. Slightly tempered by the fact that quite likely, within a couple of years, the, the car parks will not be free. In which case, presumably, these people do some kind of deal with the, the car park authority to get a cheap rate. But it is a concern that, that developers are now saying, we can, we can carry on the development without car park spaces. And obviously, we've discussed one this evening, which was providing to, was proposing to provide car park spaces. If they hear about this, what's to stop them saying, no, I'm sorry, we made a mistake, it's not nine flats we want, it's 16 flats we want, but there won't be any car park spaces. So beware colleagues of saying you don't need car park spaces anymore. Actually, we do.
Thank you. Carla?
I agree with what Mike said, I think that also the residents. Yeah, I agree, we, we need car parking spaces, not, not having any. And I was regiterate what he says regarding car parks. We have no control, we're still in negotiations to see what goes on, how, how, how and when, and how much will they be charged from the public going forward, who's going to take care of that and how much it's going to cost. I mean, residents will need, if they do have a car, then they'll need a concession, they'll need a pass for the car parking, which is going to take away from the parking itself, which is the whole point of, if you're charging them to fund, to fundraise for their maintenance and if you're giving concessions to building, nearby buildings, because they don't have parking, you fill your car parking spaces with, with the residents rather than visitors. So that, you know, it, it, one overlaps with the other and it's just not enough space in for all the whole of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry and Yon?
Yeah, I agree with the tree countryside officer. If this keeps bouncing back, much as we've had with other applications. And the central issue hasn't been addressed, which is, I pray for, there isn't a bin store, there isn't a parking. There's no exception on this kind of terms.
Thank you. Right, and then consent to you.
Yeah, I was also going to pick up on the tree and countryside officer objections, which are that it's cramped. They recommended the trees should be capped or replaced, but the ecological didn't see, it needed any objections on those grounds, just curious to me.
Yeah, unusual, Chris, please.
Yeah, the last time I have found King Bin Stores. There, there's one at the top end, just beside the round tree at the top, there's a bin store there, little tiny green there.
Okay.
And there's one down the bottom corner. It's remarkably long way from the gate. It lets pedestrians only gates, how, how they're going to get the bins out? If they're going to have to stand them on Pike Lane, would have been meant to come and do.
So, yeah.
So I figure, you know, just say that on the top. Particularly if it was about cars, I don't know.
So it's, it's a little bit like Old Market Street, where we had the development in the old carpet warehouse place. All the bins are out front of that development now, next to the funeral directors. We had a similar situation with car parking on a previous planning where they said, oh, will we just use Pike Lane Car Park? And that was passed, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
I'm sorry, Stuart.
Yeah, it's one of those, we didn't want the ingress there to the building movement, so I don't know much about it. But it's a trade-off, you know, they're using our car, tens, car parking spaces, that type. So, you know, potentially if you had one unit in there with two car parking spaces, it would be preferred to the two units that we've got there now. The design itself, I don't know about you, but I prefer the dormers coming out a bit of character rather than just flush roof lights that are now being proposed, which is in the eye of the beholder. So it does have a bit more character and give you all in a, a conservation. Think that you're paying reference to something. Little more character.
Sorry, it's a moral question. Could we reject, which I assume the consensus is, of the two, but say we would be more inclined to accept a one dwelling with a space and bin storage? Can we, can we, so can we do that?
We can mention it, but it has to come under one of the planning considerations. We think it's overdeveloped. So just, just as a show of hands, are we going to object to this? Object? I see everybody, you know, okay, so that's unanimous. So that would be objection on the grounds of overdevelopment, parking issue. Is there anything else in particular that we want to mention? Because I, I think they're our main concerns, it's, it's just under tree surgery. Thank you. Perfect.
It's the world, any third one, one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Which one?
I don't know, I've got the question maybe, I don't want some. Mr Pearson, one might be wrong.
Okay. Are we content to object on those grounds? Yes. Right. I believe that's all, unless we've got any 101 decisions of variance.
There are no decisions of variance.
Thank you. 10225 items to be referred to Greater Stepford Partnership. I'm on Breckland for lunch, but have you anything that? So this is our opportunity for anybody to say something that in this needs to be referred.
I think just as a note, of course, with the last partnership, we did have a presentation from Kingsfleet, which I think, Alan, was quite organised for them to come and address the full council, which this is not on the furlough, but I think they said "and", but.
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. Have you, have you finished with me? So anything else you want from me this evening?
Mark, thank you very much, you're free to go.
Thank you, Chair. Best, everyone.
So on the, on the Kingsfleet development, I also attended the business breakfast this week, sorry, last week. And one of the comments was one that we've made in the past, which is about the, the design and build of the, you know, the very generic buildings that they're putting up. One interesting remark actually came from the last applicant. And that was that the vehicles that come out of the, the retail unit, that's going to be at the end towards the A11 on the right-hand side. Highways have said that they can't turn right out of there, so they're going to have to go left all the way down to the Mumford Road, round that, roundabout, and then back up, which is past two sets of traffic lights, the place where all the kids cross over into Ammals. And they're not, those lorries, I assume they're going to be lorries, are not going to do it once, they're going to do it twice because they're coming back again. So this is something that may come across our bow shortly. And again, on the, on the Kingsfleet development, all of the points we raised, they seem to think that we, we've done pretty well out of it. And they tried to speak to highways and going against what you said earlier, Matt, I'm not surprised at all. I don't think highways really have been a great help to us in many occasions.
So I was just.
To add to that, I think, with that, that was just the retail, but I understood from the Chair out of the that the, whilst they're developing that top, the actual road is not going to be the position. The idea is that roads can be fast. But whilst they're building that, all those lorries are not going to be able to turn right into that top bit. And they're all, all those construction lines are all going to come down to the Mumford Road.
As well as?
I wish everybody, if they go, they go down and come back, if they go down there and go along the Mumford Road itself.
And the only other way in is to come down Mumford Road, turn left. It's just, it's madness, isn't it?
Doesn't want.
Okay, so we've got nothing for Great Step partnership and 103325 progress of actions from previous meetings. You see up there, I, I mentioned this earlier, that we were going to write about the amount of specific alcohol licensed places that are in existence. Now, licensing of Breckland had made some changes and brought in a couple of plans, which reduced alcohol pieces. And there were a number of planning applications in process. So we held off and we've now held off to a point where it seems like that's a bit out of date. I still think that the information we get in it will be relevant, but the change in it is so quick that we would be redoing that, I think nearly every couple of months with the amount of retail, sorry, licensed outlets that are available in town. Thoughts?
Are we talking about what's on the screen now?
What's on the screen?
That was for gambling, not licenses, isn't it?
License gambling, I apologise.
So I was thinking, we've got alcohol problem?
No, no, it's, it's licensed. Media reading license.
I'm supporting you for still want to, can I? My opinion, I think the time's passed.
Yes.
Now, it struck probably I was hot when the new super slots one was being done. It was probably the time, it's probably passed now.
Yeah, maybe.
We can still do.
And, and we've, we've probably been usurped by vape shops and things.
We've got other things we can, we can do instead.
Are we content to remove that, notwithstanding the fact that it's, it's still a problem for the town? And particularly with Safer Neighbourhood and police action that we're trying to chase up with it, it is relevant to mention. Are we happy to remove it? Otherwise, we're late. Okay. And finally, I think we're finally there. You said moving on to its paper. Committee officers update?
The only thing I have to ask is, has it been useful in terms of, previously we'd have given you a whole lot of applications with windows, etc. I've done the exercise with the Chair, you've gone through the planning applications, these are, these are relevant, these are likely to, to, to listen to responses and present those to the committee. And then we can send the councillors the other planning applications that they suffered comments in their personal capacity. Has that worked?
Terry, then you? Yes. Yes, I think, I mean, we spent plenty of time on four applications tonight and we gave them due regard, didn't we? So I think that says that we have.